Thank you all for being here. Just a few housekeeping notes. If you have any questions, we're going to have a panel discussion first around juvenile justice and the how the system works and our response to it. But at the end of it, I really want to be able to open this up to have a community discussion, be able to answer any questions that you may have. There are some note cards available that my staff can collect as you have questions. If you write down a question and hold it up, my staff will be around and will work through any of those questions at the end of this. We have a great conversation. This topic is obviously so important for all of our communities, and I am so thankful for everybody at this table for their role that they're playing in helping addressing violence amongst youth and in our communities, really, and for making sure that we're developing healthy paths forward. So I have some scripts, so if I'm reading a little bit, please forgive me. So our juvenile justice system is obviously a collaborative network with various entities from state, county, and local levels where we all kind of join forces. In Hennepin County, this network includes our 4th District Court, the Hennepin County Attorney's Office, the Public Defender's Office, the Department of Community Corrections, the Sheriff's Office, and 40, nearly 40, local law enforcement agencies. Everybody has a unique and specific role to play in this, whether it's addressing immediate incidents, maintaining our public safety, managing the repercussions of crime, working on offender accountability, or spearheading preventative efforts. However, they don't all operate in isolation. So it's, we all know that it takes a village in order to make this work. We all have to come together to identify the challenges and the gaps that exist in the existing system and engage in collaborative problem solving. By working together in unison, we are able to continually assess, innovate, and adapt to the shifting crime trends that happen in our evolving community needs, striving for a more effective and responsible justice system. So today, we have with us Hennepin County Sheriff Dewanawitt. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
County Attorney Mary Moriarty, thank you.
Thank you.
4th Judicial District Chief Judge Todrick Barnett.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here. Hennepin County Department of Community Corrections and Rehabilitation Director Catherine Johnson, thank you. And Rogers Police Department Captain Jeff Beck. Everybody will have an opportunity to discuss their unique roles in addressing the topic of juvenile justice in Hennepin County. We do have a lot to cover today, so as we are going through this, I want to allow you all a chance to introduce yourselves, if there's more introduction that you would like other than your name and position. And as I call on you, you'll have that opportunity. I also want to recognize that we don't have a one-size-fits-all approach to this. We continue to explore a layered and tailored approach to youth needs, funneling resources into a growing array of community-based service programs and programs for youth and their families. Before we really get going, I just wanted to invite Lisa Bailey, our Director of Safe Communities, to highlight some of the county resources that provide additional support options to individuals.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, and thank you for having me today. I'd just like to give a little bit of context. I think this will help inform the conversation around some of the other things or some of the things that the county is doing outside of law enforcement to impact and support young people on the issue we're talking about today. So in the aftermath of the George Floyd murder and civil unrest and the effects of the pandemic, the county realized we needed a multi-layered approach to the issue of juvenile violence and community violence in general. And so the county board commissioners invested $10 million of federal emergency response funds to looking at a variety of community-based solutions to community violence. And so what we're doing, well, we realized immediately that in order to break the cycle of violence, we need to address the issues of youth and young people. And we also realized that in order to do that, we need to address the issues of racial disparities, that they are fundamental. If we don't solve for one, we're not going to solve for the other. They're inextricably tied. So the county is now supporting a wide variety of community-based organizations to provide street intervention, violence interveners, trying to make the actual physical environment safer, so gun safety, violence interveners, issues around the physical environment. We're also working to support young people, providing them with caring adults and activities to surround them, give them support, so mentorships, after-school activities, summer activities, a wide variety, meaning outdoor activities, sports, arts, music, a whole bunch of different things to support them and get them to see that people care and that their presence is noted and we care about them and we want them doing pro-social activities. And then finally, we're also working on supporting young people's skills through workforce development, so that's internships, apprenticeships, job shadowing, professional development. We're really looking at creative ways to do that across the county, not just in my area but across all of the county. And so I think all of these together, then, in addition, we need to support victims and survivors and witnesses of crime. And so we're doing that in a variety of ways, through the county attorney's office, but also through programming and through community-based organizations to provide those services, as well as for sexually exploited youth and for sexually trafficked or sexually exploited through our No Wrong Door program. And finally, and I'm speaking fast because I know you have a lot on your agenda, finally, I just want to point out that everyone has recognized, I believe in the county, that in the city, that behavioral health and mental health, the issues surrounding those for young people is critical, and we need to address that and have more possibilities and options for them. And so the Family Response and Stabilization Services is a relatively new program that the county has set up. The county board has invested in this to say, how do we get upstream of problems rather than waiting until a crisis is to the point where a mental health or behavioral health crisis is to the point where the police need to be called or the youth needs to be removed from the home? So under this program, which is now seven days a week, 12 hours a day, a family can call and someone will be at your door in one hour. They will assess the situation, they'll work to get it de-escalated, and then if they can resolve it, great. If they are unable to do that, they connect the family with services, and then if necessary, stay with that family, meaning continue to offer services for up to eight weeks. So this is a relatively new program that started small. It's quickly proven to be very successful and effective. We're seeing really good outcomes from that, and I'm sure we'll be talking more about that later. But I wanted to just give you that information so you have a little bit of context setting for your conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. So as mentioned, we have a lot to cover, and I'll dive right into it. Now, when a youth commits a crime, the outcomes obviously vary quite a bit depending on the type of crime, whether an arrest occurs or not, whether the juvenile is then charged or if the juvenile has prior involvement. There's also a number of other unique factors that go into this. The way a youth enters, engages with, and passes through the juvenile justice system generally follows, to my understanding, a basic pathway. They're arrested, they're detained, there's charges determined, there's court sentencing and potentially supervision after that. There's obviously nuance within that, and so I'm hopeful that we can kind of digest a little bit of that through our conversation. Our first question is to Captain Beck from the Rogers Police Department. Could you talk about how an officer decides to respond to a youth who has allegedly committed a crime or an offense, and what factors help an officer decide whether to release a youth to a parent, give them a citation, or transport them to the JDC or Juvenile Detention Center?
Sure. The city of Rogers is slightly unique because we're on the outer banks of Hennepin County, and so sometimes that decision-making process for staffing levels will change that outcome or have some input into that outcome. Obviously, our goal is to make that situation safe and find a responsible parent or person that can help assist us in that process. We had this just the other night. There was a damage to property in our city, significant damage to property in our city involving juveniles. The mother came to assist us. She was at her wits' end with the juvenile and didn't know what to do, and then the juvenile got in a physical altercation with the mother and then the officer. And so then that kind of changes things. Now, what is the next step for that process? So, you know, going to the JDC, putting them on a hold, it's temporary, of course, and for charging to go through, but then how do they, where do they release that? Does the parent now have to go down there and pick them up because the release is occurring? Or does, or what is the next step? So we struggle with that a little bit. There's been times where we've brought juveniles to the JDC, and by the time we get back to the city of Rogers and complete reports, those juveniles have already been processed and released back to a different family member. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Obviously, citations or complaint and releasing to a parent or somebody that can handle the situation with that juvenile is probably the ultimate goal because then it's a quicker process, it's less intrusive for the juvenile if it's a crime that it's something we're not going to send to the JDC.
Thank you. Our next question here is to Director Catherine Johnson from our Department of Community Corrections and Rehabilitation. That's a mouthful. I'm going to say DOCCR from now on.
I was going to say, that's why we use the initials.
I know, right?
Otherwise, it takes us an hour and a half to say anything.
You know, we got a lot to cover. If a youth is arrested by law enforcement, the arresting officer is going, may bring the young person to the JDC. The detention center follows an intake and release process for admitting a youth. Could you describe that intake process? I know Captain Beck mentioned a little bit about that.
So, thank you, Commissioner. A little bit about DOCCR, because we do use the initials all the time. The Department of Community Corrections and Rehabilitation is responsible for all adults and juveniles under supervision, so on probation, any adults that might be on parole or supervised release, as well as the Juvenile Detention Center in downtown Minneapolis and the Adult Correctional Facility in Plymouth, which has been colloquially known as the Workhouse for quite some time. The Juvenile Detention Center is a pre-trial facility, and what that means is that the youth in the Juvenile Detention Center are either awaiting charges or awaiting the outcomes of their cases. So it is not a post-adjudication, which is the word we use for conviction in the juvenile system. It's not a post-adjudication facility. Now, that doesn't mean we don't have any youth who are post-adjudication in the Juvenile Detention Center. What it means is that's not a long-term placement option for those youth, if in fact they require an out-of-home placement setting. So it is akin in some ways to the adult jail that the sheriff runs. This is a facility that is not about holding kids sort of indefinitely or for long periods of time. It's not what it was designed for, and it's not what the programming is most successful at within the facility. That said, the other thing I think to note is that the philosophy of the juvenile system within the state of Minnesota assumes release. So it assumes in the state that a juvenile who is arrested will be released to a parent or in some other fashion. Some of those release options include things like shelters and group homes. A youth may be released and placed on electronic home monitoring or EHM, or just outright released to home. And to Captain Beck's point, that generally means we are asking a parent or guardian to drive to downtown Minneapolis to pick them up. So when a youth is brought to the Juvenile Detention Center, the first thing to note is that there are certain offenses for which a youth will not be admitted to the Juvenile Detention Center. Anything that is a status offense, so something that is a crime only because of the youth's age, think underage drinking as an example of that. If you have a 16-year-old who is caught at a party with a beer, they're not going to the Juvenile Detention Center. Truancy and curfew are not things that youth would be admitted to the Juvenile Detention Center for. Most misdemeanor offenses, with the exception of things like DWI or domestic assault, would not meet the criteria for admission to the Juvenile Detention Center. That said, all felony violent crimes not only meet the criteria for admission to the Detention Center, but they meet the criteria for continued detention for what is known as a detention hearing. So the way the process works is a youth is brought to the Detention Center, we use a risk assessment instrument. That risk assessment instrument takes into account the offense for which that youth has been arrested, the number of prior adjudications that that youth has in our system, any pending cases that that youth might have in our system, along with some other things that are risk factors, and they are given through this risk instrument, a score. And that score can range anywhere from zero to 30-plus. And all violent felonies score 15, which is what we refer to as a cutoff point, and that means those youth are held for a detention hearing, so they are not immediately released from the JDC. They are in fact held to go before a judge. This is where the 4th Judicial District comes into play, and the judge ultimately makes a determination at that hearing about whether or not that young person will continue to be detained or whether or not that young person will be released, and if so, to where. So the juvenile detention center's role in that is to determine, does this youth meet the criteria for continued detention for that hearing? That is our responsibility, our role in that space.
Thank you. I know you, we mentioned there's a few different spots, and my next question is actually to the county attorney around the charging decisions. Could you provide an overview of the county attorney's role in the process, specifically when law enforcement refers an incident for charging and how it's handled by your office?
Yes, and I want to thank you, Commissioner, for bringing us all together. This is such an important topic. Our youth, since George Floyd and the pandemic, are not, are really struggling right now, and it is on all of us to figure out how to make their environment and make them well, provide a space where they can thrive. And having said that, most of our youth are, have nothing to do with the system at all, even when they're struggling. It is really a small percentage of youth that become to the detention of the system. So what happens is law enforcement has a choice. If they have a case against a youth, and that could be for joyriding, a kind of minor offense, all the way on up to a serious offense, they can issue a citation, which means here, youth, come back to court on another date, and that youth stays out of custody. Or they can bring the youth to the Juvenile Detention Center. They do have the legal right to hold a youth, or the system will hold them for a short period of time. That allows law enforcement to continue to investigate, to see whether they can send a case to us. And the important thing about that is, even if a youth is arrested and held in the Detention Center, unless a case is forwarded to the county attorney's office for charging, we really play no role, and that youth will be released from the Detention Center without any potential charges, any look at by us. And so when I came into office, one of the things I realized by talking to law enforcement all over the county, and I should know that Chief Wills from Rogers here is the head of the Hennepin County Police Chiefs Association. We meet once a month. I have many conversations with Chief Wills and other law enforcement. And one of the things we heard was, you know, we're frustrated. We're frustrated by some of the issues with JDC. There was a lot of confusion about when will JDC accept somebody? So there was frustration with that, and I think we really tried to play a role in working with law enforcement to help everybody understand, hey, this is what happens, here's what you can do. And when things weren't going the way law enforcement expected, we also worked with DOCCR and staff at JDC to say, hey, this appears to be an issue, what can we do to help? We also worked with the bench, Judge Kapelhoff, I believe is the presiding judge in juvenile court, and we worked with the bench about speeding up court cases because we all know, and you all know, when you interact with youth, you need very effective, quick interventions. So one of the things we heard loud and clear, and thank you, Commissioner Anderson, for saying, you know, traditionally what happens is we at the county attorney's office get a case from law enforcement. That is traditionally the involvement that the county attorneys have had. And before I got here, if that case didn't come to us, our position was pretty much hands-off. But we heard loud and clear from our law enforcement partners that they were seeing youth who were engaging in risky behavior. They were seeing youth who were in cars that were stolen, but they couldn't necessarily bring us a case. In all of Hennepin County, for car thefts that are reported to law enforcement, the cases that actually end up coming to us for charging is 2%. Now, there are many reasons for that. There are lots of problems nowadays with how do you charge, how do you identify people who have masks on, stuff like that. But we wanted to respond, we wanted to help. Hey, you all know these kids out there, you know who's at risk. What if we met with you as many times as you wanted to or provided you with a liaison, which I have, I appointed a attorney from our office to be a direct contact with them, you tell us who these youth are. Even if you can't bring a case to us, we want to see if we can intervene in a preventative sort of way. And we started that at the end of June. It has been remarkably successful. Law enforcement from all over Hennepin County and the sheriffs, CISA, the data people have given us the names of youth who are involved in at-risk behavior. We have worked with all of our partners in the county. We bring together our child protection team. We have partnered with county mental health, and law enforcement will tell us the names of these youth. And for a while, we were using our Be at School, that's our truancy diversion program, social worker, to reach out to the family of the youth who law enforcement was seeing. And the great news about that is that we, our social worker reached out, was able to reach all but one of the families whose youth were at risk. And every single one of them, 100%, said, we're not surprised, and we had no idea what to do. Help. And so this is where we could play a role in telling people about the wonderful services that Hennepin County is providing, including what Lisa Bailey talked about, this team that will come out within an hour to set up a plan with that family. So 100% of the families that we were able to reach out to were very happy that we did and not surprised, and we were able to kind of connect them to these wonderful services that Hennepin County offered. And so the data looks very good in our role in partnering with everybody at this table in trying to keep these youth from actually coming into the system after they've been charged with a crime. When we do, and I'm taking up a lot of time, I'll stop.
Lots to cover. Thank you so much. Is, with their, Chief Judge Barnett, was, I know that the courts have been brought up in this conversation, I know it's not on the list, but do you want to weigh in on the, this part of the conversation?
Sure. One thing I would say that the county attorney mentioned, when she says speed up the court cases, it's not like you come into court, we go real fast. What I believe to clarify is that bringing, that we try to get those cases into court faster and not have that time lag between when a person's charged and when they appear before us. So I just want to make sure that you're clear. One other thing that I would want to just be clear about and mention to you all is that people don't see the collaboration that goes on with the justice partners, that there is a lot of collaboration. It's not that we don't understand our individual roles, but there's collaboration between us to make things work better and to improve things. So I think that's important. The other thing that I would say is that remember that in juvenile court, as opposed to adult court, the idea is that there's more hope for juveniles, there's more opportunity for services and to give those services to the youth that need them. So I think that's important. The last thing that I'll say is that there's two places that I think judges have the toughest decisions. One is when the young person's before us and they're in custody, and they're coming and they're for the first appearance, and we're making that decision about release. And the second place I would tell you is when we're talking about what that disposition's going to be, right? And where is that person going to go? Those are probably the two places that, as judges, we really have to give a lot of thought and considerations to the attorneys when they're making their arguments, and then what's going to happen to this person?
Thank you. Our next question is to our law enforcement partners. I know we all hear the struggles of staffing, and I'm sure everybody at this table who is overseeing a number of staff has experienced this. But Captain Beck, can you speak to the challenges that Rogers is facing or that you're hearing from law enforcement partners on the staffing challenges that you have and how that's impacting the work you're able to do?
Yeah, I think I could probably speak on all of our law enforcement partners that the law enforcement field has had a huge decline. I know that technical colleges or community colleges that are, have law enforcement programs are down significantly, and there's jobs out there, offers out there prior to them leaving, leaving the schooling back many years ago, probably when we were hired. You could apply for a job and there'd be 300, 400 applicants for one single position in law enforcement across the metro, across the state, and now you're seeing one or two applications for several openings. Here in Rogers, we've been, we're sworn for 24 officers, and we've been hovering around that 18 to 20 mark for several years now, which really takes a toll on our shifts because we have a shift minimum, which then doesn't allow officers to take time off. You know, officers have to cover overtime for sick time, and it just, it takes, it takes a toll, and I think it's continued to progress, and it hasn't, we haven't seen a lot of changes. The law enforcement communities have tried different initiatives of, you know, hiring bonuses to retention programs, to different wellness programs to try to attract people into our departments, but for the first time in many years, it's become very, very competitive to what I might offer in Rogers, what the sheriff might offer in Hennepin County, and we're kind of trying to work together, but we're working apart to try to satisfy those numbers. So it's a continued struggle, and it's something that probably will continue for some time, but we need to try to encourage that this career path can be very successful and also very rewarding.
Thank you. Sheriff Witt, I know you played an important role in this, in this process too. How's staffing impacting you?
So for the sheriff's office, we are short as well. You know, I believe we're short around 65 licensed deputies and other 30 detention deputies. That's one of the unique things you have to think about a sheriff's office. We don't only have responsibilities that include like patrolling and things like that. We also have responsibility of the jail, the civil process, the court process. So when we throw out our shortages and say, okay, how does that impact us as a system as a whole, it's quite, it's quite astounding. Now, what I will say, sorry, Rogers, but you know, I don't sugarcoat, is that we also know that sheriff's offices have typically, historically been paid less than municipalities in their counties, yet we're doing the same job and have a lot more specialties, if you will. So when I talk about recruitment issues or retention issues, that has to be a part of the conversation. When we look at the reason people are leaving to do the same job but to get paid more money or to, and to do less work, it's absolutely ridiculous. But what I, as a part of our recruiting process, one of our questions is, is why do you want to be here, especially now? So trying to recruit people that understand the functions of the sheriff's office and making sure that they want to be with that agency. Now, as someone who's been a part of recruitment and retention, not just at Hennepin County, Dakota County too, I could tell you, I was probably my sheriff's worst nightmare because I really I really thought about when I recruit or when I mentor people, I truly try to put them or help them get to where they want to be. So you know, whether it's somebody who has a stronger sense for wanting to be at a municipality, I would tell them write out an interview. We should start looking at this area, right? Because you also got to think about that retention piece. I don't want somebody who's going to be here for three years. I want somebody who can see themselves being there for, for the rest of their career. And then, you know, so I'm also an adjunct too, and the, the class sizes have been very damaging the last few years. When I say that, I say single-digit numbers. This semester though, I will say that for, for Inver Hills, which we changed our program there, it's called culturally responsive policing. It's still the same program, but we have an intentional culturally responsive part to our program. Well, now we have classes in the upper twenties, lower thirties, which we haven't seen in the last couple of years, which is good. But we also understand that, okay, now how do we keep them interested? And then it's the programs that we're talking about, like the Explorer programs for the sheriff's office. That has always been a recruitment tool for all law enforcement agencies. And so we're going hard with that. How do we attract our young people to this field? They may not become people in the law enforcement field. They may become an attorney. They may become anything in the field, but that is so important because we can't just be thinking about now. We really need to think about the next generation of people that go into this field. And then when we're thinking about just the platforms where kids can see law enforcement incapacities, where we're not always responding to something negative, that has also have to be a part of that recruitment part. So you know, one of the things that the sheriff's office did, yeah, we started there up again. We need to be in that platform where we are a part of the education system. When we're talking about our different, our different roles in this, there has to be overlap. When we talk about increasing and bettering the relationships between the community and law enforcement, we have to be put in roles where we're not responding to bad things. So, so that has got to be a part of all of our systems, right? As we know, it's been a big topic of conversation about so much being put on law enforcement that we should not be in. Well, you know what? Here it is. We did invite ourselves in that. That's the system as a whole that have put us in those situations where we are being responsible for things that are not a part of policing. But to that end, we have to be a part of the solution. And that is making platforms and where law enforcement isn't just always responding to negative things, especially when it comes to our kids. When we're talking about that retention, not just thinking about now or recruitment, shall I say, what's next generation? Because this profession will be around, you know? And so we should, we need to be focusing on years to come and how we can do better. And that does mean collaborations, and that, when I say collaboration, it's not this is your job, not my job, that starts here. It's true multidisciplinary teams where we're allowed to share the information, because when you talk about being preventative and intervention, you can't do that unless you have the information. And so stop treating each of the systems as if, okay, this is gonna, you're going to do something wrong or bad with this information. We have to start trusting that we're going to do good with this information and have true multidisciplinary teams and not letting it just be a, an attractive word or a phrase, if you will. Did I talk too long?
Hey, like I said, there's a lot to cover and I appreciate the depth of knowledge you bring to it. I also, to, to that end, I'm going a little off script, so we'll get back on, I promise. You mentioned the importance of being able to share information and work collaboratively as a team. I know that Hennepin County has been working really hard in terms of combining data so that we can do some of that preventative work. We've also invested in programs, not just the family response, but our embedded social worker program that allows more of the right response for the right, right purpose so that not so much burden is placed directly on law enforcement that maybe shouldn't be. And I think these are also areas that are really important to have as part of the overall picture, that we can work together to advance these like really effective solutions that are meeting people where they're at and lessening some of the burden that is, is placed on some of these stressed, stressed systems that are dealing with more than, more and more. And so I think we're, that's the, the nature and the importance of being able to have our collaborative nature, systems working together, so.
You know, I will say too, as far as for law enforcement, as well as actually county attorney's office, if you think about the different systems that we all have, we need systems that talk to each other. There's ways to flag things without having the conversations. And so as a county, we need to think about how can we be on the same system? You know, while we're talking about these kids or even adults, all right, Hennepin County is a big county, and the last time I checked, nobody just stays in one city all the time. People are mobile, our systems have to be mobile, and they have to be able to interface and talk to each other.
Can I, a specific example on that was Minneapolis Police Department was, when I first started, was telling us about a teenage girl who had been involved in a lot of different car-related events. Sheriff was also telling us about this girl. And she had a unique name, so we all knew who she was. And you know, the sheriff here is nodding her head because she remembers exactly who this girl is. And I remember hearing the name and then, for a long period of time, and then she was in a tragic accident. And I remember thinking, well, we all knew her name, we knew that she was at risk and struggling. What exactly happened here? And, and just to tell you a little bit about the data, as county attorney, we have, we represent child protection, right? And we have youth prosecution, and we work with the county on juvenile behavioral health. And so I asked for a critical incident aftermath report, and, which our people did, but only I, and the head of our youth and family services program, could actually hear what was happening. Our child protection people couldn't share that info with our youth prosecution team, nor could anybody share what was happening with county mental health. And so we sat down and we got to look at the whole picture, and it was very clear what was happening to her and how in the future, with a youth in that behavior, that place, we could do better. But it's still that way. None of us really share that information, but we are working on that.
And I think to that, to that point, some of these rules are in statute.
Yes.
You know, it's not a decision necessarily that each of the system is making to withhold information from each other. It is, we are required to keep that data secure.
Yes.
And that's why I think it's good to look at, again, when you're talking about multidisciplinary teams, when we know that there's certain contractual information that could be there that does not necessarily go against what the statute says. But again, the goal is to make sure that our kids are going to do better, going to be better, and we're getting them the services that they need. We know that there's multidisciplinary teams that exist like that, but not necessarily when we're talking about kids who are in the criminal justice system. And again, I think that is our, our professions that work against each other, you know, one is better, one's bad, we can't share it. We got to stop thinking that we're doing this and using this information for the wrong reasons when we all have the same goal. So we got to get, we got to get into that type of thinking and where we can make this happen.
Thank you. I want to...
...in custody who comes, who's been charged, and it's their first time and they're going to appear on that particular charge, and they're coming from the detention center into the courtroom. And so at that point, as a judge, we're, we're in that position to listen to that juvenile's lawyer, listen to the prosecutor as well, to come up with what is the decision about release or detention? And you might have saw me earlier lean over to Catherine Johnson, because they have started just a tremendous service at that detention center that I hope, at that detention hearing that I hope that she talks about. But the decision that we're making at that point is really about, is this person going to stay in the detention center? Are they going to be released to an adult? Are, are they going to be on electronic home monitoring? And so that's the decision that the judge is trying to make at that point. And like I said earlier, that, that's a, one of the toughest decisions that we make because we're trying to, at that point, have as much information as possible to make the decision that we think is right. I think the other critical part is when we get to that point of disposition or an adult court sentencing. And there, our decision-making and listening to the lawyers and looking at reports from the probation department really comes down to, a lot of times, we have to look at the law and what is the least restrictive alternative for this particular person? And so when you think about that, the out-of-home placement is the last resort for us. That's the one that we're trying not to do. And so when we talk about collaboration in services, it's a lot of work with the probation officer who's there giving us options on what is best for this youth and taking those, taking that into consideration with the attorney's arguments at that point. So hopefully that's helpful.
Yeah, thank you. And so I think that leads into kind of the next question. I'll open this up a little bit to, to more on the panel, but what are some of the, the options and programming available to youth who are charged or who have been sentenced? And I'll start at the end, Director Johnson, if you wanted to start.
So I think the options vary depending on where you are in the process, just as the judge mentioned, their decision-making process is different depending on where a young person is in the process of the system. One of the distinctions between the adult system and the juvenile system is our ability to mandate certain conditions and then monitor those conditions post-release. So you hear the judge talk about that detention hearing, which is that first place that a young person comes in contact with the court. Their determination about whether or not that young person stays at the JDC or is released and to where, really the only options for the judge available at that point are to home, to a shelter, to another responsible adult who's willing to, like another family member who's willing to take responsibility for that young person, and potentially on electronic home monitoring. There's not a lot of options legally for the, for the judge at that stage. Some of that is that difference between the adult system and the juvenile system. Several years ago, several, three, four years ago, we tried to connect young people at the detention center as they were leaving the detention center with resources, and it wasn't successful. And with resources, I mean voluntary services to help address some of the issues that may have brought them into the system in the first place. And it just wasn't working. People were not connecting with those services. And so we have a contract with Lutheran Social Services, which is not a DOCCR contract, it's a county contract, and it covers spaces within corrections as well as in human services and safe communities. What Lutheran Social Services agreed to do in collaboration with some of our other system partners and, was to move that resource to this detention hearing. And so Lutheran Social Services has a case manager who literally sits at every detention calendar. So every young person who goes through a detention hearing, there's a social worker from Lutheran, or case manager from Lutheran Social Services that sits there, listens to the case, talks with the family who has appeared with the youth, talks with the youth, and offers a wide range of voluntary services for that youth, whether it is something to do with educational attainment. This child is short on credits, they haven't been going to school, all right, let's figure out how to provide support services in that realm. There are issues with substance use. Okay, let's figure out how we connect the young person with the services they need. The parents may have issues with substance use or mental health. How do we connect the parents to the supports they need? Because when we're talking about a young person, it's not just the young person we're talking about. We're talking about that young person and the entirety of their family structure, right? What are the ways in which we can best support that family structure, including the young person, to help them be successful? And so that program, you heard me say the word voluntary, we cannot mandate that. It is voluntary services on the upside. We've only been doing it since, I think, April, and the initial numbers in June or July were really, really positive. April, May, June, we got some numbers at the beginning of July. Most of the young people were agreeing to those voluntary services and then actually later following up. The numbers that I'm getting now are not quite as good. I think the initial numbers were about 80 or 90% of those young people were saying yes, and we're connecting. That number is closer to 50/50 now. So we need to have some additional conversations about what that shift has been and why. But those young people who are connecting with those services are not spinning back through the juvenile detention center, right? They are not coming back to see us. They are being successful in that free-travel skills. So the second part of it is post-adjudication, so...
Can I just jump in?
Please.
I know I'm going to change. I don't know if you really understand the significance here. As a former public defender, and I'm old, so, I mean, when I started, this was not there. I mean, we had parents who were talking to us in, prior to this, saying, "Help me." And we're saying, "Well, we can't do anything until your kid's adjudicated." Right? "Help me. My kid's not going to school. Help me, my kid's using drugs." And we were saying, "Well, you can try to take your kid here." They're bringing that service to the detention center for these parents and kids. This is huge because legally, I can't make them go do it. And so I don't want to just skip over this part because it's just such a big help and resource for families in, in the juveniles, so. That's why I want to interrupt. I didn't want you to skip over that, so.
Thanks, Judge. Thank you. Would anybody else like to weigh in on this yet?
Yeah, and there are a number of wonderful programs out there, and we know that for actually a majority of youth, the less contact we have with them, the better, and they won't come back to the system. But there is a small group of youth that simply is not safe to go home. And a small group of youth who are engaging in really dangerous, sometimes violent behavior, where they are not safe and the community isn't safe. And we just don't, I'm going to be really honest here, have the places to put them. I'm going to give you a couple of examples. We have two teenage girls, youth under 18, who the recommendations are that if they identified as boys, could go to Red Wing, which is a youth residential treatment program because they need intensive services. But because they don't identify as boys, we have no place to put them. So the recommendation is that these two teenage girls be sent to the adult prison at Shakopee. And that is unacceptable. How, how do we justify that? That because you don't identify, we just don't have a placement for these girls? The other thing is that we, it's just so much comes across my desk where we know the kid can't go home, and there needs to be a heightened intervention. And, and all the research says the best practices are a continuum of care in that youth's community at varying levels of security. Sometimes it has to be residential treatment that you can't leave. But the importance of this is that the youth develop relationships with their treatment providers. Sometimes you have to bring that treatment for substance use, mental health into them. And then there have to be step-down programs, so they're not just plunked back in their community with no support. We simply don't have those in Hennepin County. And that's meant in my first few months here, I actually advocated, and it's hard for me to believe this, that a 12-year-old boy stay in the juvenile detention center because we had no place to put him other than where he ended up going, in Utah. We've had 12-year-olds, 13-year-olds, 14-year-olds in the juvenile detention center for months because we have no place to put them. We are failing these kids. We are failing them. And we desperately need to do something to help them. And I want to emphasize again, it's a small percentage of these youth.
Can I just add on to that too? Saying it's a small percentage of youth, that's just of the kids that we know about. But you know what? We know that there's kids out there that don't know how to ask for help. We know that there's family systems out there that are so well-protected and guarded that we don't even know what to do with them. And you know, I, I can talk about that personally and professionally. So I think that small number is actually larger. I just think that we don't know about it because that's what families have been conditioned to do. And then, you know, let's talk about just parenting and then going into the system. What do we know, what have you always been taught as a parent? Okay, your kids need immediate reaction... Okay, your kids need immediate reaction to whatever it is that they did when they're misbehaving. We have a system that we're better, I want to acknowledge that, we're doing a lot of things better here, especially collaboratively, to make sure that we are responding sooner than later. But we also need to think about, kids do what kids do, and that is to push the boundaries. And so when you say, Mary, that we are failing our kids, we absolutely are, because what are the boundaries? It is their job, it's their condition to push those boundaries. I would also agree with not having an immediate place for them to go to deal with this, because there's the population of kids nobody's talking to, and that's the adults now that have somehow went through the system and was probably at, say, a county homeschool or something like that, that will say that if I didn't go there, I'd probably be dead, prison, or something like that. There are those people as well. When we talk about law enforcement, and I would go back as far as 2009, and I'm going to use the words of one of my colleagues, where it said, "In so many words, we were conditioned not to, not to bring kids to the JDC." What I would be interested in is seeing the increase and the impact of juvenile crimes and how that correlates with the decrease in kids that we are seeing in facilities. Again, we're conditioned in our minds to think that that's the most horrible thing, but I want to push people to think that maybe you're saving some of those kids. You're saving them from themselves, you're saving them from the community. We talk about what's going on in our communities right now. Who can say that our communities are stable right now? But yet we're going to push kids back into an unstable community and expect for them to be able to receive whatever services that they need. We got to be honest with ourselves. This is everything, and this is nothing against one different deal, but we have to really look at this holistic picture. Right now, kids do not feel safe in their homes, they do not feel safe on the streets, and then there's that thing called, oh, hey, peer pressure, where we wonder why we're seeing some kids where the first time commit some of the most outrageous crimes, right? It's not starting off by stealing a pack of gum. Well, think about the community that we're in there, their peers. If their peers aren't held accountable, why should they? You know, or, hey, I better do this because this is a cool thing to do and they're not getting in trouble for it. We got to look at all of these things, so there's no cookie cutter answer. I just want to make sure that we're thinking about all of these things because they're all relevant, and they all correlate. And again, I reiterate that, I agree. We are failing our kids as a system. We just are.
Yeah, and I really appreciate the passion. I was wondering if I could send it back down to the end of the table, if you could speak to some of the other options that do exist for youth that have been, I'll say, use the word convicted, right? And I know I'm probably not using the right terminology.
Adjudicated.
Not a lawyer.
So I think part of what's important to note, and you heard County Attorney Marriety say it, which is it's a continuum of care, and there have to be the ability to go, there has to be the ability to move both directions in that continuum. So more restrictive, now I'll come to the judge's language, the least restrictive option is where the bench needs to go, right? That's where we need to start most often. Now, it depends on the youth and a whole host of circumstances. The idea is to use the least restrictive option available. So there are, in Hennepin County, there are those least restrictive options, there are day treatment programs, there are group homes, there are foster care situations, there are shelters, there are programs along that continuum of care in Hennepin County. What we do not have is a secure setting. The secure settings that we have available to us, you heard the county attorney speak about Red Wing. Red Wing is run by the State Department of Corrections, and it is the state's facility for male-identified clients. The state has no commiserate facility for female-identified, which is the point that I think County Attorney Marriety was making with that statement. There is no such facility run by the state that serves girls. Right now, there are other private facilities or county-run facilities that we are using in Hennepin County for our youth when they need that level of treatment, when they need to be at an RTC. Some of those facilities are in places like Dakota County, some of those facilities are in the Arrowhead, so Arrowhead Regional Corrections is another space. There are also privately operated facilities that we use that are the same kinds of residential treatment settings in a variety of places, many of them in outstate Minnesota, or as you heard County Attorney mention, in other states. Now, specifically, the individual that she was speaking of that is in Utah is not actually in Utah on a correctional placement. One of the things that we haven't really talked about are those young people who get stuck in the system who shouldn't be there. That young person was in fact deemed to be incompetent due to reasons of age and mental health to actually understand the consequences of their actions. So they cannot proceed in the criminal justice system because of that, and yet spent about a month, I think, a month and a half, at my juvenile detention center awaiting that psychiatric residential treatment center placement in Utah. The biggest struggle I see in terms of available placements have to do with those young people who need that level of mental health care in addition to being in our criminal system or in our social services system. Those kids, those levels of psychiatric available beds just don't exist, and that's not a state of Minnesota problem or a Hennepin County problem, that's a nationwide problem, to be frank. So that's a space where I think we have, in my opinion, the biggest opportunity to move and to try and fill those gaps. One of the things that is occurring right now at the state level is something called the Youth Work Group, or Youth Interventions Working Group, of which I am a part, as well as several of my corrections colleagues from across the state. Commissioner Jeff Lundie is one of the chairs for that. The Department of Corrections is a part of that group. Sheriff Witt is a part of that group. There are a whole bunch of people, frankly, sitting at a table recognizing this is an issue that needs resolution, and their goal and their mission is to try and figure out how to do that, not just for Hennepin County, but for the state of Minnesota. Because not only do kids not just stay in one city, they don't stay in one county, right? So those boundaries are sort of artificial when it comes to kids and their behaviors. So we need a statewide system that addresses some of these gaps you've heard us talk about today, so that that space of feeling as though we're failing our kids can get filled, because that is a statewide issue on a number of levels.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I want to move us on. We've talked a lot about the people who are entering the justice system because of decisions they've made or circumstances they find themselves in. I want to shift gears a little bit to the victims, people who have, who find themselves involved in the justice system, not because of their own actions, but because of something that's happened to them. I'm going to send this to you first, County Attorney. Can you speak to some of the services that are available to victims and how we're appropriately responding to them?
Yeah, that also is, probably anything I would answer, is a nuanced question in a way. When I came into office, I had heard from many people who had been harmed, who were victims, that they didn't trust the system, which is all of us, and particularly in our office, that they weren't communicated with, they weren't treated respectfully. And so we have partnered with MNCASA and Violence-Free Minnesota, which are coalitions of advocacy groups for sexual assault and domestic violence victims. We partnered on legislation, I testified to get them money for direct service to victims. And so we need to do a lot better, and one of the things we are doing as an office is partnering with law enforcement agencies to help them work with the victims in these areas. Big picture, though, one thing I see, and I talk to a lot of victims' families, I talk to a lot of victims, and I do that all over the country as well, and I, big picture, what we see a lot of, what we've historically seen, is our system saying, the justice is the length of prison time that the person who harmed you gets. That is what the system has always had to offer. That's what everybody's been told. This is the value we place on your loved one's life or the injury that they received. And the truth of the matter is that length of prison times really do nothing in terms of helping a person who's been harmed move forward, heal in any way, and that is why restorative practices are so critical. We have had a system that has traditionally said, "Deal want the traditional legal system or nothing." And I think the data is about half of crimes aren't even reported, more than that on sexual assaults and domestic violence, because the system just doesn't provide what victims want or need. And so we have to really expand our resources. We have to expand our resources in terms of restorative practices that do truly help people work through the harm, the very real harm and trauma that they've experienced. I'd also say we are at a pivotal time, and since we're talking about youth stuff here, I think we're at a pivotal time where we need to make some decisions about, are we really about rehabilitation for youth, or are we about punishment and retribution? Because we have some well-publicized cases right now where a youth has done something terrible, taken somebody's life. We have a particular case where a youth was incarcerated essentially at residential treatment for four years and received absolutely everything the expert said he needed before this lengthy court process started. And so he is flourishing. He is flourishing. Victim's family very much wants me to send him to prison. But the question I would pose to you, and I think it's a pivotal question for all of us, if he had, if he is flourishing after having gotten four years of what he needed, despite the fact that it was a terrible, horrible crime, and we will never, ever bring that loved one back, do we send him to prison? Which is about retribution and punishment at this point, or are we really going to put into practice what many of us talk about in terms of rehabilitation of youth? So that goes to the extreme of some of the issues that we're working with now, but I think as a system, we have a long way to go in really, really giving people who've been harmed by crime and trauma what they really need. And I know we're all aspiring to do better on that, we're working together to do better on that, but we do have a long way to go.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to talk about victim services? Sheriff Witt, yes?
Yes, I would, too. So first, I want to talk about like some of the jail programming, like we brought programs into the jail because we realized that our residents in the jail are not only being allegedly to have committed a crime, but we also know that we have victims in our facility. So I'm all about working that to the rehabilitation side and giving people what they need, giving them the resources so that they can do better. At the same time, I have people that come to my office to talk about victims that come to the office that feel like they're being victimized all over again. So there is this delicate balance, right? And no, it shouldn't be a number, a number of years that justifies justice. What I can say as a person, even in this position, who has been victimized as a child, you know, victims have rights, too. And so what does, what does that mean? Are we taking this humanistic approach and then putting statistics in it and taking that humanistic side out of it? So, and then when we talk about people recommitting crimes or allegedly recommitting crimes or whatever, are we teaching victims or people that are vulnerable that it does no good to speak up? So it is, again, a delicate balance, because I absolutely agree with everything you said. However, we do have to look at the other side of it, too, and what are we doing to people, to the people that we have sworn to protect? You know, dealing with a dad this week and having to explain to him how the system works and what our part, what our part is in this, you know, people don't want to hear that. What they do feel is the impact of the crimes that have been committed against them and their alleged family. So again, I think we get dehumanized when we start throwing stats in there, because what we're missing with the stats is the impact that some of these crimes are having on people. And to get over that, to try to tell people that, no, let's just get past that because we're giving this person what they need, which they absolutely do need that rehabilitation, I want to be clear there. Sorry, my family have me on a clock here. But, which is absolutely needed, but at the same time, we can't, we got to think about that next generation. What are we actually teaching, especially to kids? I used to investigate sex crimes, like sex crimes against kids, and I could tell you, some of those stories are still with me today. And you know, and I often think about some of them victims and, okay, how are they doing today, knowing that the person who violated them is going to be out soon? You have to think about that mentality. There is no perfect answer, I'm going to say that, there's not going to be a perfect answer. But at the same time, we cannot lose, what are the consequences, whether unattended or not, of the victims, right? And it is a balance. So again, I absolutely agree with what, Mary, what you're saying about that, we need that, which is why I'm pushing programming in the jail even. But then how do we make sure that our, that the victims of these crimes are whole? And again, I do, I do it a lot. I bring in personal experience with my professional experiences, you know, and I never forgot those things. And that's why I try to thrive. How can we do better? How can I be who my family needed to see throughout the system? I do carry those lenses with me every day. And, you know, while it takes a time coming from a victim lens to say, okay, this is how it felt, this is what happened, now how can we do better? Not forgetting the impact of what those things are, not that I could, but how can we always do better? And so we have to have those conversations, because simply put, there's some things that can't be taught to people. It's lived experiences, and so how do you put that with it and then make sense of it all? So again, not having a one, or one lane, we got to think about it as a holistic approach.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I'm going to move us on.
I think you said I talked too much. Sorry.
I do, the Working Group for Youth Intervention was brought up, and Mary Ellen Heng is the Director of Justice Initiatives and Program Performance. I was wondering if you could provide just a quick update, and I'm going to stress quick.
Director Johnson touched on it. The focus, this was created by the legislature, we had our first meeting September 13th, our next meeting is next week. The focus of this group, you've heard a lot about the touchpoints in the system, it's a very narrow focus. We're focusing on youth that have been adjudicated, either child needed protective services or delinquent, so the back end of the system. And there are twenty-six members that have been appointed, and they represent a wide variety of experts, law enforcement, corrections, health and human services. We have culturally competent organizations, we have some community members with some lived experience, either themselves or a family member in the system. So we brought all these experts together, and really, the Working Group is kind of looking at three key areas. The first is, we are looking at what services are out in, not just in Hennepin County, but in the region, but the state. What is the current state of those services that are being offered? So we're doing that scan so that everybody knows this is what exists currently. We're also looking at the licensing requirements. Director Johnson touched on this a little bit. Depending on which way the youth goes, sometimes the youth might be able to go to a facility because they are not in the correction system because of the licensing requirements, and so we're going to be looking at that. We're going to be looking at the gaps in the system, the continuum of care, and where we can provide answers, solutions to those gaps. And we're also looking at the best practices across the nation to inform the decision. And we're doing this with some data and the expertise in the room. And at the end of February, this Working Group will produce a report to the legislature with some recommendations on how to move forward to address a lot of the issues that are being discussed. The Working Group, there are public meetings, there's a website, which we can provide the link to, that you can watch the meetings, and agendas and other documents will be available on the website, but this work will be ongoing through a series of five or six meetings to hopefully address a lot of the issues that you've heard discussed today, because it's a very complicated problem to solve. And my role is, we have a team of Hennepin County staff that are, we're kind of the behind-the-scenes support to the work that these experts are going to be doing to help them get that report completed and hopefully present some recommendations to the legislature that they can consider as they move forward in their work.
Thank you. So I'm going to transition. We have a few questions that came in from the audience, and I just want to make sure that I get through these. And if anybody else has any questions after, after we make it through this, feel free to raise your hand and we can, we can have an open discussion. Our first question is, how city-elected leaders can support our efforts in keeping youth out of trouble? youth out of trouble, and also efforts to hold those accountable? And I'll open it up to anybody on the panel that would like to address that. I'll let you start, Sheriff.
Sorry. So you know, we hear people who would talk about that acronym P.I., you know, Prevention, Intervention, Engagement. My P.I. is a little bit different. I say Prevention, Intervention, and Enforcement, because youth do need rules, they do need boundaries. You know, we're talking a lot about the prevention and intervention parts here, but we also need to discuss what happens when those thresholds have been crossed. And again, sometimes protecting kids from themselves, as well as the public from themselves. And so, you know, we have to do, we have to do all three of those things. You know, when we're talking about when some of those most serious thresholds have been crossed, you know, whether it's carjacking, or, you know what, taking away someone's livelihood because of the amount of damage that you have brought to their property or things like that, there needs, there should be consequences. You know? And when I say consequences too, consequences does no good unless we're also teaching them to learn from their actions. So not just to be penalizing to them, but are they learning from whatever misdeeds that they did? And that's something that we need to really think very hard and tough about. It doesn't look pretty. It doesn't, it's not coddling all the time. Sorry, that's not what it should be about either, but it doesn't have to be about penalizing at the same time. So as we do as parents, where we tell our kids, you know what, this is going to hurt me more than it's going to hurt you, it's kind of the same analogy with the system, you know? Are they learning? You know, again, I talked about having an unstable environment. Okay, so we know that kids need resources, we know they need help. Bring those resources into an environment where they are safe, where they can feel safe, and that they're able to receive those services. Because right now, with the climate that we have out here, I don't know if that's happening for them. Of course, I hope that it is. But again, prevention, intervention, and we also need enforcement.
Thank you. I want to get Captain Beck's perspective as the city perspective here.
Yeah, I think that what Sheriff Witt touched on is really important. You know, local programs that we have, we rely heavily on the county, as well as, now we have a county social worker that is in our building. But the support that we get from the city side of it is, here in Rogers, is tremendous. We have a council that understands that the youth need the attention, which can take more resources and more time. And, you know, we just, we try to work with our partners as a smaller city, with not all the options out there, to try to find the best result.
Thank you. Next question to the panel, how does Hennepin County's juvenile justice system compare to other counties? And I'll open it up to the, probably County Attorney, Chief Judge.
Well, just had visitors the last two days from Ohio, some judges here and some other court personnel and justice partners. They face the same issues that we do, but one thing that been noticeable from them and other folks who've come here to visit from other states, is just a collaborative effort that we have. People are so impressed with how well we get along to try to solve problems. So I think we're better than most.
I was just at a conference in Washington, DC, two weeks ago, and a lot of the topics were about emerging youth, coming into adulthood. And DOCCR has a really good program, recognizing that, like, 18 to 24-year-olds are not adults in terms of how they approach things, and they have supervision for those young people. I would say we're, and I'm not comparing us to other counties, I always think about how we can do better, comparing us to ourselves. I think where we can do better is really recognizing that emerging adulthood. I mean, we talk about brain development, that kind of thing, and we tend to think of it in terms of, well, the legal system thinks of it in terms of, when you turn 18, suddenly you are an adult. We treat you as an adult, yet we know, from ages 18 to 24, we're still developing our brains, we still have some of the same impulse control, peer pressure, that kind of thing. And so I think we could do a much better job, and other jurisdictions have raised the age of, it's no longer 18 in some jurisdictions, to treat people as youth. They have raised the age to how long we can keep youth in the juvenile justice system. For instance, here, I have, and I, you know, we look at things through a lens of public safety. And I have authorized 17-year-olds to be certified as adults, and we have sent them to prison, unfortunately, because we don't have other options. And so we can do other things. And the reason we do that is because I think they need to be incapacitated, because at 17, we can't hold them on, onto them long enough. We don't have the intensive programs that we need to be able to rehabilitate them, so it is in the interest of public safety to incapacitate them. And I would like us to improve on that, lifting the ages, and providing a lot of those resources that we talked about. And to the last question, really advocating for these changes at the legislature in how we look at youth, and advocating about the continuum of care we need in community.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to weigh in on the comparison? I'll move it. The last question that we received, how are the educational needs of the juveniles met while being processed?
So the Juvenile Detention Center has its own high school. It's called Stadium View High School. It's operated by the Minneapolis Public School System, so all of the youth who are detained at the Juvenile Detention Center, regardless of how long they are there, not just have the opportunity, but are required to go to school. They have worked with the Stadium View folks, as well as with the Educational Support Services folks within Hennepin County, to try and address credit recapture. Many of the young people who find themselves in the system have struggled in some way or other with school, either being there or being successful while they are there. Many of those young people have educational, individualized education plans. And so it's really working with the young person to determine what is their needs. They'll get an assessment, if they're going to be there with us for longer than a day or two. They get that assessment to determine what is it that we need to be providing specifically for that young person in order to help them be successful. We do have young people who graduate from Stadium View High School while they are inside the Juvenile Detention Center, which on the one hand is really cool, they get the opportunity to do that. On the other hand, I wish they weren't doing it in my juvenile detention center. So those educational services are there. We also have, once they're, when someone's not being detained, our probation officers work pretty intensively with that young person to ensure their educational success through a variety of resources, including some of the connections with youth and social services that I mentioned already, as well as our educational support stuff. Sometimes that looks like getting the kid the technology they need to get connected, right? Sometimes that's, here's your iPad, get connected, let's do what we need to do to get you the credits that you need, and here are the ways we can do it. So some of it is that, some of it is reconnecting with school environments that end up working better for that young person. So it's a variety of educational options.
Thank you.